Thank you very much for coming out on a Saturday. It's great to have you here. It's great to be back in the district. And I'm looking forward to taking your questions. We can talk about whatever you'd like. But let me begin by just giving a brief introduction and answering one of the most frequent questions I get at town halls like this, which is, there's so many issues out there, there are so many problems, there are so many things to deal with. How do you set your priorities? You know, what are your priorities? What are the things you focus on? Well, yesterday, my priority was getting engaged. And... So Liz is here. And Liz, you want to stay up? Liz is an amazing woman. We've been dating for a couple of years and kind of talking about taking this next step for a while. But we're very excited to do it, very excited to formally start a life together. She has an incredible career herself. She's always jetting around, doing executive search. She works for a big firm called Korn Ferry, helps leaders, CEOs manage and lead their companies, which is something that I've learned a lot from. It's been very helpful to me. She's also, does all sorts of domestic things, like we like to cook together. We cooked dinner for ourselves last night. You know, I think a lot of times when people get engaged, they go out for a fancy dinner. We were so excited just to be home for a change and to make dinner ourselves. So we went down and got a piece of swordfish, and I grilled the swordfish, and she made a salad. And that's kind of how we like to do things when we have time. But I've learned so much from her. I'm very excited to be spending my life with her. And we're excited to get to know each other's families even better, because we both have wonderful families that are incredibly important to us. My mom and dad are also here today, so mom and dad, maybe you can... You can stand up. They've been around for a while. You probably know them already. So thank you for that personal indulgence, but obviously something very important to me. So let me get to the political answer to that question, though, the answer that I have to make every single day for my job. You know, I sit on two committees in Congress right now. I sit on the Armed Services Committee and I sit on the Budget Committee. So those things, those committee assignments have a lot to do with my priorities. But as a team, we think of our priorities in three buckets: international, domestic, and district. So on the international front, I am very concerned with the threat of terrorism and the threat of Russia. The threat of Russia undermining our democracy, their constant threat of nuclear war. And making sure that we stand together as Americans, not as Democrats or Republicans, but as Americans, to meet the national security threats that our nation faces. I also know as a veteran myself, that if we're going to send young men and women over to fight our battles overseas, we better have a strategy, we better have a mission, we better have a plan. And I'm not sure we have those things these days, and that's one of the reasons why I'm so active on this front. On the domestic level, there are so many priorities that we face, so many challenges, so many priorities we have, so many challenges that we face, especially right now when so much is under assault from the new administration. I know healthcare is on your minds. It's on my mind, too. In fact, when I called Liz's mom yesterday to tell her that we had just gotten engaged, she saw, she must have seen my name on the caller ID, and she answered the phone and she said, I said, "Hi Cathy." And she said, "Seth Moulton, have you succeeded in stopping this healthcare bill yet?" And I said, "No, but I have succeeded in getting Liz to marry me." That's literally how our conversation started. So that is on the minds of millions of Americans across the country, and you can trust that it's a priority right now of Democrats in Congress. Another priority that I've been pursuing for the last couple of years is taking care of our veterans. I think our veterans deserve the best healthcare in the world, and they're not getting it. And it's a place, thank you, it's a place where we should have agreement. That's not a Democratic issue or a Republican issue, it's an American issue. And I'm proud to have sponsored and co-sponsored a lot of legislation to improve that, but we obviously have a long way to go. I get my own healthcare from the VA. That's a commitment I made when I got elected. And I see every time I go there that there are some great doctors and great nurses who are doing a great job, and then there are some places where people are falling through the cracks, and we've got to close that up. Now, at the district level, my number one priority from day one, but it remains this, is economic development. How do we make sure that everybody here has a good job, a good paycheck to take home to their families? And that's something that means different things in different communities. You know, we're lucky to live in a place where individual towns and cities have real characters and identities. And so the economic development needs of Beverly may be different than the economic development needs of Gloucester, even though if you look at those two cities on the map from a distance, they probably look quite similar. Same location, both coastal cities, you know, both tied to the water, but tied to the water in different ways. And so we have a whole economic development team, led by Jason in my district office, who's doing an extraordinary job. He has a position, Economic Development Director, that most congressional offices don't even have. But we've met with the leadership of every one of the 39 cities and towns that I represent, and we'll continue doing that to help you wherever we can. We're making great progress in Lynn, as an example. There's about $217 million worth of real estate development going into Lynn just this year, largely as a result of these efforts in our partnership with the state government under Governor Baker and local governments, the local government, obviously, in Lynn, but also in surrounding communities. So we're going to keep that up. But if those are my sort of priorities at the international, domestic, and district level, there are also priorities that I think about just coming out of this last election, this election that really changed the world for a lot of people. And when I think about those broad priorities, I'm doing three things. One is standing up to our president. Standing up to our president when he tramples on our rights and the Constitution and on our values.
Stop the war!
What?
Sit down!
Well, that's...
ISIS is from Russia! ISIS is from Russia! It's an Iranian war!
Okay. Well, thank you for...
ISIS is from Russia! ISIS is from Russia! It's an Iranian war!
Well, thank you for...
ISIS is from Russia! ISIS is from Russia! It's an Iranian war! It's an Iranian war!
Well, thank you for...
ISIS is from Russia! ISIS is from Russia! It's an Iranian war!
Well...
You're a liar! There's no question! ISIS is from Russia! ISIS is from Russia! It's an Iranian war! ISIS is from Russia! ISIS is from Russia! It's an Iranian war! It's an Iranian war!
All right. All right, well, thank you very much.
ISIS is from Russia! ISIS is from Russia! It's an Iranian war!
So we're, so we're gonna...
ISIS is from Russia!
Okay, so we're gonna...
ISIS is from Russia!
Thank you very much.
ISIS is from Russia! ISIS is from Russia! I'll run against you!
Okay.
I'm running against you! I'm a terrorist! I'm a terrorist! It's not climate change, it's ISIS!
All right. All right, well, thank you very much.
ISIS is from Russia! ISIS is from Russia!
So we're, so we're gonna...
ISIS is from Russia! ISIS is from Russia!
Okay, so we're gonna...
ISIS is from Russia! ISIS is from Russia!
Thank you very much.
ISIS is from Russia! ISIS is from Russia! I'll run against you!
Okay.
I'm running against you! I'm a terrorist!
Okay. All right. Well, shall we take a snap poll about who he voted for? I think we know.
ISIS is from Russia! ISIS is from Russia! Where is your party from? A violence law! We live in a... It's a Chinese crime!
Okay. All right, guys, it's okay. It's okay. Look, there...
He's a good guy! He's for America!
There are some...
He sold your country out!
There are some heated views. Thank you. Well, let me thank the city of Beverly. You're delivering more excitement on a Saturday morning than I've grown to expect. Look, obviously, there are some heated views, but we will have an opportunity in just a couple of minutes to express them respectfully and to do so with question and answers, and I'm looking forward to that. I actually have a reputation for being very bipartisan. That's the platform on which I was elected. That's something that is important to me. And if you ask my Republican colleagues in Washington, they would tell you, I'm someone who can work across the aisle on shared priorities. I'm never going to compromise my principles, but where we can come together to do the right thing for Americans, I will do that. There was a recent study that came out ranking all the members of Congress by how bipartisan they are, how willing they are, how effective they are, in fact, at getting bipartisan co-sponsors for their bills and vice versa. And I was rated the most bipartisan member of the delegation in the top of the Congress. And that's something I'm going to continue doing. And you know what? If President Trump wants to work on infrastructure or something that's a shared priority, I will even work with him. But when he tramples on our Constitution and our values, we can't stand silent. Now, my second priority, which is related to the first, in order to help us do that, is to help reform the Democratic Party. And this is a tough conversation. For Democrats in the room, this is a tough conversation, because this involves looking ourselves in the mirror and saying, you know what? We've lost. We've lost a lot of elections at the federal level, at the state level, at the local level. The Democratic Party as a whole is in its worst position in national politics in a generation. And so we've got a lot of work to do. That requires some self-reflection, and I think it requires a new generation of leadership in the party. And part of that is coming up with a serious economic strategy for the country, because we all know what the president's strategy is. He says we should go back into the coal mines, go down the street, get a pick, go back into the coal mines. He says that automation isn't going to affect our economy for another 80 years. That's actually a direct quote from his Treasury Secretary. And he says that all the job loss is just to be blamed on immigrants. Well, when I talk to factory workers in America, they're not worried about their job getting taken by an immigrant. They're worried about it getting taken by a robot, being automated out of existence, and having the two guys next to them lose their jobs as well. So this is a tough reality, and there aren't any easy answers, but we have an opportunity as a party and as a country to find an answer for that, to figure out how everybody in America, no matter if you live on the coast or in the Midwest, in the South or the North, you have an opportunity to be a part of the new economy. So that's something that we're working on as well. And I wish I had a lot of answers for you. I don't. But I think it's important for you to know that your representative in Congress is thinking about this every single day. So with that, I would love to turn it over to you for your questions. And I welcome questions from all sides of the aisle. We don't need rants, but questions are most welcome. And I recognize that my job is to represent everybody in this district: Democrats, Republicans, independents. No matter who you voted for in the last election, I'm your representative. That might be good news for some, bad news for others, but I take it very seriously. I don't expect to agree with everything you say or believe, but it is literally my job to work for you every single day. So with that, thank you so much for joining me here on Saturday morning, and I look forward So if you want to just introduce yourself with your name and where you're from...
Terry Segal, Gloucester.
Hi, Terry.
Seth, I support you 100% on the change, the change of new leadership in the Democratic Party. I think you were very courageous in January to start this. Isn't the best argument where there'll be no dispute the fact that our three leaders in the majority, in the minority, are about 77 years old? And most people at that age are looking at senior living, not becoming, continuing. And nobody can dispute that. And isn't that the best argument, to simply say, "We don't follow the Republicans, but they have leaders who are on the 10th and 12th Hall. Our leaders are on the 18th. Can't we get some new people in there?"
Look, Terry, I represent a lot of senior citizens, a lot of people who are doing great things. Look, honestly, I think the best argument, frankly, is that we're losing. That's the reality, and you can't keep doubling down on losing. And if you looked at this Georgia race that was very, you know, very publicized all across the country, the number one argument that the Republicans used against the Democrat was not his views, but our leadership's views, and tying him to our leadership, in particular our leadership in the House. And so that's just a reality. I mean, if we were killing it, you know, what I always said when I first came to Congress is, it would be pretty arrogant to show up at an organization like Congress and say, "You're going to do things totally differently," if the institution was working really well, right? Who am I, as a guy who's never been in politics, to show up in Congress and say, "Well, I think we should do things totally differently" if Congress was just knocking it out of the park every day? But that's not the case, and that's why, as an entire team, we've tried to be a very different congressional office. You know, like if you go to our office in Salem, it doesn't look like a normal congressional office. It's open, it's transparent, it's collaborative, it's the things that government should be, but it's not. We had an angry person, not quite as angry as that gentleman earlier, but come in and give him an intern at the front desk a hard time because she wouldn't give him a charger for his iPhone. He thought it was an Apple Store. He said, "No, no, it's a congressional office." So look, I think that's the number one thing. This isn't working, and so it's time, it's time to change. But thank you, Terry, for your comments. And thanks for coming down to Beverly today. Okay. Who's next?
I'd like our representatives on either side to be for something, not against something.
Oh, I couldn't agree more. Couldn't agree more.
So I have a suggestion. Could you take all the things that you'd like to do to fix the Affordable Care Act, send it to the CBO to be scored, and have a real fact-based argument that perhaps fixing Obamacare is cheaper than the Republican plan?
Thank you for that question. That's literally exactly what we should do, and it's what we're trying to do. The problem is that the Republicans and the president refuse to even enter the discussion. I mean, look, I wasn't here when Obamacare was passed, but ever since I started running for Congress, I've said that it is not a perfect piece of legislation, that it's done great things to improve access to care. It actually has reduced healthcare costs overall, although some people have seen a rise. And it is also, you know, working towards getting better quality care for Americans. I mean, these are achievable goals. But the Affordable Care Act isn't perfect, and we should be open to amending it. I've voted for some of those amendments myself. Just last year, I voted to amend the medical device tax, because that actually was crippling innovation from some of our smallest companies, including some right here in this district, which actually helps reduce healthcare costs in the long run. So there are tweaks like that that we should make. And frankly, we provide a really good example of that here in Massachusetts, because the healthcare law, Romney Care, that people came to know and by margins of over two-thirds come to love here in Massachusetts, is not the same bill, or was not the same bill that was passed in 2006. It was amended in a bipartisan way over the years to make it better. But while I wasn't here when Obamacare was passed, it was nonetheless done so with open hearings, with over a year of Congress doing its business the way it should. Democratic amendments were accepted, Republican amendments were accepted. That is exactly the process that should happen today. But to do what you want to do requires that open process, and instead, this Republican bill is being written behind closed doors. It's being... May I finish, please? Thank you. It's being written behind closed doors, even fellow Republicans haven't been able to see it until this week. So we haven't even been able to have the hearings, the discussion, to do what you want to do, to make Congress work the way it's supposed to, which is that you go to a committee and you present these ideas, you present these amendments, and you get them scored by the CBO. You can do that if you have an open process. You can't do that if Republicans are running the process and keeping it behind closed doors. So what does it mean? It means two things. One, we've got to make sure that this stops with the failure of this bill, that it does not get any farther than it is today. And two, it means Democrats have got to take back the House so we can start running government the way our democracy intended. Thank you very much for your question. Okay. Who's next?
Hello, congressmen. My name is Tom. I'm from Georgetown.
Hi, Tom.
Hi. My question, as a veteran, what are your thoughts on President Trump's proposed increase in military and defense spending and cuts to education and the EPA?
Well, it's a really good question, and I sit on the Armed Services Committee, and we are going to be dealing with this literally this coming week in committee, where we'll have the annual markup of the Defense Bill. And a lot of people start by saying, "Well, Seth, isn't it true that our pilots aren't getting enough training, or some of our troops don't have enough ammunition?" And that actually is true. That is true. Some of our troops on the front lines are not getting the training and the supplies that they need. But the problem is that when you look at our defense budget as a whole, we're wasting billions of dollars on things that we don't need, and that's the problem. So it, as, let me just quote President Trump's own Secretary of Defense, when he said that, "If you cut the State Department budget, you better buy me more ammunition." That is the reality. And when the OMB Director, Mick Mulvaney, came before our Budget Committee this year, I asked him that. I said, "Do you realize that you're going to be putting troops in danger, their lives at risk, when you cut the State Department budget by 30%? When you say, 'We're not even going to try diplomacy, we're just going to use our Department of Defense.'" And he said, "You know, well, there are a lot of people in this room who have different views on this and who may disagree with me." I said, "Well, Mr. Budget Director, I'm just talking about your own Secretary of Defense, your own cabinet member who says this is wrong." And he didn't have much to say. So one of the most important lessons that I learned in serving overseas is that any time you ask the troops to do a mission, it better be backed up by a political plan. You better have a diplomatic strategy before you have a military strategy. And I think we don't have that today, and it's getting worse with the president's budget. And that's why I've come out so strongly opposed to it. And the other point I made, you brought up education. Look, I don't think I have to convince everybody in this room that education is important. We all know why it's so important. I wouldn't be here today if I couldn't have walked down the street to Glover School when I was growing up and get a good public school education. So we've got to strengthen and improve education. But let me make another argument about education. If we want to maintain the national security lead that we have had over adversaries like Russia and China, if we want to maintain that lead, that's not just about putting dollars into defense, that's about putting dollars into education, into basic scientific research, into the building blocks of what makes us such a great and powerful nation. So even if you just care about national defense, you should care about investing in education, and the president's budget doesn't do that. So from my position on the Budget Committee and my position as a member of Congress, I will continue to oppose the president's budget, just as I have to date. So thank you very much.
Hi.
Hi there.
John Zoba from Beverly.
Hi, John. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good, thanks.
First of all, I wanted to congratulate you on your engagement.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You mentioned that your first priority internationally is Russia. So I guess the question I have as far as American interests are concerned, which country influences our government more, Russia or Israel?
An interesting question. So the problem with that, I understand the implication of your question, and we have a very close alliance with Israel, and there are a lot of political interests in Israel. We have a lot of Jewish members of our community. But the difference between Israel and Russia is that one is an ally and one is an adversary. And Russia is literally trying to undermine our democracy today. And what they did in the last election in 2016 is something that's going to get repeated. You know, Putin is not someone who sees a little success and says, "Okay, I've had enough." He's going to double down on that, just like he did in the Crimea. And so when, outside of politics, Republicans, Democrats, when every national security intelligence agency, when every national intelligence agency in the United States government agrees that Russia influenced the 2016 election and will try to do it again, both for us and our allies, then it's time to put partisan politics aside. You know, they may have chosen to help Trump in this last election, as they did, and that's not a political thing either. That's what the national intelligence agencies say. But who knows who they're going to help in the next election? And more importantly, what happens when Americans start to lose faith in the power of their vote? Because that's what our democracy is all about. And so that's why, well, the reality is, that's probably true. But did Russia have an influence on this election? Did it sway public opinion? Yes, in fact, that's documented. And they tried to do more. And they're doing it overseas. And so, you know, Israel didn't tell you to vote either, but Russia is literally trying to undermine the underpinnings of our democracy. It's why almost the entire Senate passed a Russia sanctions bill, and it's why we need to get that through the House. And it's why this is a time when Democrats and Republicans have to come together to defend our country, to defend our values, defend our principles and our Constitution. And so I've been calling for an independent bipartisan commission to investigate what went wrong. I mean, look, I can make a pretty good case that, you know, given all the party politicking around this, we should just have a Democratic commission investigate Russia's involvement in the last election and the collusion with the Trump administration. But that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying, let's make it bipartisan. Let's make it independent. Let's just get the facts for the American people so we make sure it doesn't happen again. But thank you very much for your question. I'm in the fortunate position of not being in control of who gets called upon, so it's all dependent on, you can blame Morgan and Dylan when we're done.
Hi. Michelle Thane, Beverly.
Hi, Michelle. How are you?
Hi, good. Congratulations. I guess I want to know what you're thinking about North Korea.
Sure.
I was born on an Army Basin's hole and remember Tiarra Grist drills in preschool in the 80s, and South Korea has boomed under democracy since then. But I can't help but feel that this ally, South Korea, this overwhelmingly successful democracy the US helped form, is under real threat. At the same time, there are many people in the North who are our brothers and sisters. My grandmother was forever separated from her family after the war. I think you've said that the US shouldn't intervene in places without a clear strategy, but the stakes are growing every week. What's your take on North Korea? Are you just waiting for it to screw up and implode, or do you see a military solution?
Great. Thank you very much for that question. I went to South Korea, actually stepped for a few minutes into North Korea when I was there a couple of weeks ago, because this is such an important question right now, not just facing South Korea, but facing us and our allies. Japan is very concerned about this. We were in Singapore, even Vietnam is affected. So this is a very serious question that we have to address. And the Trump administration has a strategy. Their strategy is to increase the military pressure on North Korea. But the problem with that strategy is that there really isn't a military solution. And you know, in a lot of ways, I wish that there were, not because I'd like to exercise it, but because that would give us a lot more leverage over the situation. But North Korea can practically obliterate Seoul if they want to, and not even through missiles. They don't have to fire a single missile. They have so many artillery guns trained in and well-protected to shoot at South Korea should war break out. Literally hundreds of thousands, including tens of thousands of Americans, would die on day one if that were to happen. So that is not the way that we want to see this go. So what is the solution? Well, I'd like to tell you that there's an easy diplomatic solution, but there's not that either, because successive presidents, Republicans and Democrats, have tried to make this work. And yet, the situation in many ways has gotten worse, because North Korea has developed farther-reaching missiles, better nuclear technology. They're much more of a threat today than they were 10, 20 years ago. When you talk to South Korean officials and when you talk to the South Korean people, they get a little bit, they have a little bit different perspective. They don't think this military bluster is such a good idea. And I saw the polls that show this. They think diplomatic pressure is important. They think being willing to talk to North Korea is important, but they don't think that threatening them with a lot of US carrier groups is going to fundamentally change the situation in a good way. So what does that leave us? Or where does it leave us? It leaves us... It leaves us with some difficult choices. But it makes us think carefully about the roles of our allies, about the importance of diplomacy and intelligence, about figuring out a way that we can give North Korea a soft landing if it fails, not a hard landing that leads to war. And I think that requires the kind of forward diplomatic strategy, forward-thinking diplomatic strategy, that I think has been lacking for too long. That means that it's not enough just to send an extra carrier group to patrol off the coast of North Korea and expect the situation to change. You've got to have real, serious talks with China, which frankly have been made more difficult by the President. You can't go from calling China a currency manipulator, which by the way, they were in the past but are not now, so it's just completely, you know, off on the facts, and then sit down with them over chocolate cake and think that everything is better. But that's kind of where we are right now. And so one of the things that we're trying to do in Congress is go to Southeast Asia and say, "We're going to stand together with our allies. We're going to make sure that Japan is strong. We're going to make sure that the ASEAN nations are united." And when China or North Korea, whoever else threatens international law, we're going to stand up to protect it. So I wish I had a better answer. I wish I could tell you, this is exactly what we need to do to solve the problem. But I hope I've given you at least an idea of the framework I think we need to address it. And also some of the dangers presented by the current approach taken by this administration. So thank you very much for your question. Who's next? I can't see. The lights are very bright.
You've said it. Tom Ryan said it. The Democratic...
Sorry.
The Democratic brand today is toxic. We're hearing about Russian collusion in hacking the DNC. When are we going to deal with the contents of all those emails that got released? Bernie Sanders' views represent, resonate well with disenfranchised voters, young people, and independents. I mean, we're hearing, well, he's not a Democrat. And again, if the Democratic platform is so toxic that they can just say Nancy Pelosi and get everybody to not vote for us, I mean, is that necessarily a problem? Look at the election of Quist in Montana versus the election of Ossoff over in Georgia. Quist, who is a Bernocrat, got basically no attention at all in a very deep red state. Ossoff got the most expensive representative race in history, and we got very, very similar results. I mean, we can keep talking about how Russia interfered, but they did release emails with things that actually happened. When are we going to deal with that?
Well, these are some of the discussions that I think we need to have in the party. And this is why the status quo is not acceptable. This is why we have to sit down and look ourselves in the mirror and say, you know, "What's going wrong with us, not just what's going wrong with them?" But even more importantly, it's why we have to have a forward-thinking vision for the country. It's why we have to have a real economic plan. An economic plan that's actually realizable. Not something that's fake math or fuzzy math, but that we can really make, but a ways that we can really make a difference for the American people. That's why I'm talking about the future of work. That's why I'm talking about how you deal with the automated economy. And that's why, you know, a lot, there's a few of us in Congress who are actually working on, what are the specifics for this policy? Because no one knows. We're trying to figure it out. I wish I had a great answer for you right now, but if we did, we'd probably be winning elections again. So that's what we're working on. But these are the tough questions that we have to ask. You know, some of the things we're talking about are the importance of portability of benefits, for example. Because sometimes jobs are changing so quickly in this economy that, you know, just having healthcare through your employer, for example, locks you in when you should have the flexibility to change jobs. You know, that's an example of the kind of thing that we need to figure out. We need to figure out how to make sure people can get reeducated for new jobs when the jobs change. Because there are some amazing statistics about how the 20 most popular jobs in 30 years, half of them don't even exist today. So when you talk about investing in education, we got to invest in early childhood education. We got to invest in high school. We got to make sure that everybody who wants to go to college can go to college and not be saddled with student debt for the rest of their lives. I mean, look, I'm a member of Congress with student debt, right? I'm still trying to pay my loans. These are important questions. We also have to figure out how, if you lose your job when you're 60, you have the chance to get a new job. So these are kinds of, these are some of the things that we need to work on. But it starts with an honest conversation among Democrats, looking ourselves in the mirror and saying, you know, "Why are we losing these races?" Now, look, to your specific example of races, it's terrible that you have to spend this kind of money on congressional races. But look, you know, if we have one race that either side spends $10, and another race where both sides spend $100, and the results are the same, well, that's, you know, that's not hard to figure out why. It's not the absolute amount of money it's spent. It's about the modest money that's spent on both sides. So these are good questions. But the point is, we have to be willing to have the conversation. And right now, there are a lot of people in the party, including our leadership frankly, that's resistant to even having that conversation. So thank you very much for the question.
My name is Elizabeth Coolidge-Stolz, and I live in North Reading.
You have a great first name, Elizabeth.
Thank you. I'm rather fond of it. When I was a child, my parents, like those of many of my classmates, had grown up in the Depression, had fathers who had served in World War II or Korea or both. And we didn't think of ourselves as being a resistance generation, but a projection generation. That is, I thought my parents had had the worst of it. My father had been shooting people and being shot at when he was 17. And we were going to fight for better civil rights, and better. But the adjective was better, and we were going to project a positive force, not resist a negative force. And I'm one of many people who have voted every time, have voted for whom I thought was the better candidate every time, and yet woke up truly feeling as if I'd been on LSD after this last election in November of last year.
Elizabeth, I don't know what that feels like, but you tell me, and I'll trust you.
Actually, I don't know either, but I do know what it's like to have multiple operations and wake up from a general anesthetic and feel very dissociated. And it is like that. You're not really quite sure who you are or where you are, but you know you're not where you want to be. So my question is this, and it isn't even an issue of bipartisanship. It's an issue of nonpartisanship. We as a country have avoided general conversations about civil rights, disability, what we care about as a democracy, as a floor of living for people who need supports, whether it's because of education, medical need, or other. I noticed that you're a member, at least last night it indicated online, you were a member of the Bipartisan Climate Change Caucus and a member of the Bipartisan Disabilities Caucus. So my question for you, because I voted for you way back when, when you were in the primary against tyranny and have ever since, is what do we do as citizens to project again, not just resist? And how do we get a conversation that actually leads to the questions we need to ask ourselves as Americans?
It's a great question. Great, great question. I love the question. I love the implication of the question. You know, look, on a political front, there are a lot of people who say, "It's just enough to resist Trump. It's just enough to oppose everything he does. It's just enough to say you want to impeach the guy." But we actually have to have a plan. We have to have a vision. We have to have an alternative. We have to show people that we have some ideas ourselves. And that's a lot of what I've been talking about. We need to do that for our country. You know, it's one of the reasons why this week I started the new Democratic National Security Task Force. Because obviously, leaving national security to Republican leadership is a disaster right now. That's been proven pretty clearly. And so we've got to have some plans ourselves. But it's not just enough to go say, you know, President Trump's Korea strategy is bad. Let's talk about what the right strategy should be. We want to say defense spending is bad. Let's talk about our vision for the budget and where we think these tough cuts should be made. But more broadly, let me tell you, you know, you've kind of hit on the essence of what our democracy is always about. Because America has never been a land of equal results. You know, we thrive on the free market economy. We thrive on freedom, competition, the free exchange, the open exchange of ideas. It's what's made our country, our economy, our education system so great. We're a place where no matter where you're born, no matter who your parents are, what they make, or what they look like, you're supposed to have equal opportunity. Equal opportunity to do whatever you want. You want to go serve, you want to be a congressman, you want to be the owner of a coffee shop? You want to start Facebook, run a lumberyard? You want to teach school every single day? Or you want to go fight for our country overseas? No matter what you want to do, you should have the opportunity to pursue that dream. And you may do well, you may do poorly. You could start Starbucks, or your coffee shop could go out of business. You could be a successful politician, or you could be someone who loses after his first term. But whatever you want to do, you should have the opportunity to pursue that dream. And I worry that today, we are just not living up to that value in our Constitution from our founding fathers. That it does matter what zip code you're born in. That dictates whether you have a good education or not. And that's wrong. That it does matter whether you've been medically lucky or you've been medically unfortunate, often totally beyond your control. It's not a land of equal opportunity if you can't do the same things as your friends if you happen to have a medical condition. If you happen to have a pre-existing condition and you can't get insurance under the Republican bill. That's not equal opportunity. That's not equal rights. And as much progress as we have made, I mean, one of the most memorable days of my congressional career, aside from yesterday, of course, was standing on the steps of the Supreme Court when that landmark decision was handed down. And being able to say that I was there to witness freedom on the march, civil rights advancing, progress on principle. And I was even able to say, "Hey, my state led the way." That's what America's about. That's what America's about. It's about truly believing that we may be good, we may be great, but we can be better. And we do so by looking forward, not by looking back. Not by saying that we can make America great again by looking backwards, as if the 50s were a great time, as if civil rights was better back then. No, but by saying, "America is great today, but we can be greater." That we can look forward. That we can lead, not just resist. That's the America that I believe in. And that's the America that we all have to fight for. Thank you.
Congressman Moulton, thank you very much for your service. And congratulations to you, Liz. I hope we got you a good ring. Okay, so we have a question about transportation...
Not the biggest ever, but it's pretty good.
All right. I've been married 17 years. It's tough. We have a question about transportation, jobs, and infrastructure, which are your priorities. 150 of my new best friends and I came up with a petition for you about the commuter rail disruption that will occur
Right, this summer, yeah.
in Beverly, in the summer. As far as I know, in the past, the MBTA has no plan to provide replacement bus service from 80% of the Beverly commuter rail stations. They also have no plan, Congressman, to provide free parking in Beverly. So I don't know exactly how they expect me to get to work. That said, we have three questions for you. Do you feel, as a federal official, that you have a role in talking about this? If so, what is that role? And three, who do I give my petition to? Everybody in your Washington office?
You can give it to me. You can give it to me.
Beautiful. And finally...
Thank you very much. Sorry, what's your name?
I'm John. I live in Beverly.
John. All right, John.
So we have one last hope for you.
Okay.
My sixth grader is going to overnight camp, and he would really like you to say something nice about that, because he's terrified.
Jeez, I've never been to overnight camp myself, so it sounds scary. No, I won't say. I'm sure it'll be awesome. Where is overnight camp? In Maine?
Connecticut.
Connecticut? All right. Well, Connecticut's a beautiful state, and I'm sure it'll be a lot of fun. That's not very creative. I guess I need to work on this stuff. Look, we absolutely share your concerns. I think, where is Rick? I think we've gotten, we've helped get that changed, though. I think that bus service has recently, they just announced that bus service will be expanded. Bus service will be a lot slower than the MB... I know, hard to imagine something slower than the commuter rail, but yes, the bus service will be slower. So it's not going to be an adequate solution. But this is actually an issue that my office has been working on for months. So there is a federal role here, especially when we're just not happy with what the state is doing. And it's why I, as a federal politician, have been such a strong advocate for the North-South Rail Link. It's something that would make a huge difference for our community. How long does it, I don't know what commuter rail stop you go to. How long does it take you to get to Boston on the train today?
Probably about 45 minutes.
Probably about 45 minutes. So if we did the North-South Rail Link, that trip would be about 30 minutes. By the way, for every single person whom you pass with your train, it would be a lot quieter, because it would be with an electric train rather than a diesel train. It would get there much more quickly, and it would get you not just to North Station, but to the middle of the city and to South Station in about 30 minutes. And you could walk across the platform to take a train to any other commuter line in the state or on the Northeast Corridor to New York or to Maine. Your son might even be able to take the train from Beverly to his camp in Connecticut. And this isn't such a pie-in-the-sky idea, folks. This is about just saying, "Why are we expanding South Station for over $2 billion when we could put that same $2 billion into connecting the two with a lot more capacity and the potential for literally tens of billions of dollars in economic growth?" We, look, I didn't, I wasn't convinced of this when I first signed up. Governor Dukakis came to me and said, "We need you to advocate for the North-South Rail Link." I said, "I'm going to make sure this makes sense first." So we've done a lot of diligence on this. We've surveyed people. We've brought in experts. We haven't found a single city anywhere in the globe that's doing what Governor Baker wants to do and add seven tracks on the surface to South Station, which will do nothing for us and will only serve the capacity needs of South Station for, wait, for it, 10 years. I mean, the thing won't even be done in 10 years, and it'll be obsolete. North-South Rail Link would be the kind of transformative investment that we need to make for the future. Just like Elizabeth asked before, how do we think about the future? How do we lead? How does Boston become a leading city and we become a leading region rather than just put a Band-Aid over a problem that's existed for a long time? Do you know why the North-South Rail Link was delayed? Originally, the North-South Rail Link was delayed due to World War I. This has been a priority, this should have been a priority a long time ago. But it is the kind of transformative investment that we need to make today. But in the meantime, just for this summer, for the next couple months, while the MBTA is installing positive train control, which is a very good thing. I mean, it is a safety improvement that's needed, that we'll appreciate in the long run. We have been working very closely, and we want to work with you. And so, you know, bring the petition from your 150 best friends. I will take it. I appreciate it. And we'll respond to you. All right?
Okay, everyone, this is the last question.
Okay, Morgan has the last question. Hi there. Oh my gosh, it's a duo.
Yes. Hello, Congressman. Firstly, thank you for coming and letting us speak our opinions. My name is Eliza Michaels, and I'm a Beverly High School student.
And I'm Rory. I'm a high school student as well.
All right, guys. Thanks for coming on a Saturday.
Absolutely, yeah. So...
Oh, thank you.
So looking around the theater this morning, I couldn't happen but notice that there weren't many other young people here.
Yeah.
Where are your friends? On a Saturday morning, where are they? On a Saturday morning, where are they?
What has your team done to better connect with young people in the 6th District?
Well, that's a great question, because it is a priority of ours. We do a lot. We actually have a very young team. Not everybody, but most people are quite young on our team. We do an awful lot to try to connect with folks from your generation by being super-active on social media. We've been called the most tech-forward office in Congress. Out of 535 House and Senate offices, we've been called the most tech-forward. Thank you. I'm proud of that, too. My friends tell me it's a very low bar, but we're proud of it. I used to proudly say that I'm one of the only politicians who does his own tweets, but that's no longer a distinction in a positive way. I do avoid tweeting at 3:00 in the morning. But these, but these are the kinds of things that we do to try to get young people involved in politics, because you know what? You have the greatest stake in our future. And if we remembered that more as a country, if we spent more time looking forward rather than looking backwards, I think we'd do a lot better. And we'd help more Americans realize the American dream, that we all want to be a part of our lives and that we want for our kids and grandkids. So thank you two for coming here this morning. We really appreciate it. And thank all of you for coming out here. You know, it is, it is truly an honor. It's a huge responsibility and a tremendous honor to represent you. And when I have the privilege of walking into the House of Representatives every day I'm in Washington to cast votes, really on your behalf, it's a, it's a charge that I take with the gravest seriousness. It's something that I think is a part of our democracy that we need to preserve and strengthen, not tear apart. And when I cast those votes, I do my best to think about your needs, about our needs as a country, and the needs of our children, to think about our future, not just about our past. I hope that you'll stay in touch with me. I hope that you'll not only come out to town halls like this, but you'll come visit the district office. Come, we don't have free iPhone chargers, but, but we do try, we do literally work for all of you every single day. Some of the work that we do, you'll never hear about. It's that veteran who didn't get his paycheck, or his disability check from the VA. It's about the retired civil servant who isn't seeing his pension come through. Or the retired school teacher who isn't getting his or her social security check. That's the kind of work that we do every single day. We've literally returned hundreds of thousands of dollars to constituents of the 6th District in just a couple of years, two and a half years. And I have an amazing team, a pretty young team, that's doing a lot of that work. And so, please come and meet us. See us on Facebook, follow me on Twitter, become me distant persons, share your ideas, share your concerns. You know, if you want to build a wall, tell us, like that guy did, but tell us politely. Most of the ideas that we pursue in Congress don't come from some secret book somewhere. They come from constituents like yourselves, who are engaged in our democracy. And there is no more important time than now to be engaged in our democracy. So thank you for everything that you do. You make me proud.